¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? ¿Qué es la reunión de los miembros del Consiglo? Buenas tardes, estamos en la presidencia para los miembros del Consiglo que pasen en la sala de la reunión de los miembros. Quiero las gracias al concejal de la ciudad, a la concejal de la ciudad, por estar aquí. Los tres miembros del Consiglo, espero que los otros miembros del Consiglo se presenten para empezar la sesión. Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos. Estamos aquí. Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos. Estamos aquí. Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos. Estamos aquí. Hola, Miko. ¿Cómo estás? 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 Buenas tardes, estamos en la presidencia para los miembros del Consiglo que pasen en la sala de la reunión de los miembros. Quiero las gracias al concejal de la ciudad, a la concejal de la ciudad, por estar aquí. Los tres miembros del Consiglo, espero que los otros miembros del Consiglo se presenten para empezar la sesión. Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos. Estamos aquí. 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 Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos. Estamos en el servicio de atención. Esperamos a vosotros para acostear el cuerpo o dejar su posición en la reunión de los miembros. Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos. Estamos aquí. 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 Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos. Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos. Estamos aquí. 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 Gracias por venir, gracias por ayudarnos.
Item number 33, a request from CD6 to continue that matter until May 1st. Request to continue from Council District 6 members, without objection. Item number 2 is commission appointment, is the appointment of Doreen Dominguez to the City Planning Commission. There is a planning and land use management committee report recommendation. Mr. Dominguez can come forward at this time. Public hearing having been held in committee, members do not have requests from the public to be heard on Mr. Dominguez's appointment. Members wishing to be recognized? The members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Congratulations, you are confirmed. Thank you for serving the city. Fourth with this. Next item. Mr. President, item number 1 is an item notice for public hearing. Item number 1 now before us, and I do not have requests from the public to be heard on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to be heard on item number 1? On item number 1? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Item number 1 is approved. Fourth with this, please. Mr. President, items numbers 3 through 12 on the regular agenda are items which public hearings have been held. Before we take these items, just to advise that you have one presentation this morning. Ms. Galanter.
Mr. President and members of the council, it's my very great pleasure to recognize in council and to present to you this morning a group of young men, one of whom you've already met. This is the Westchester High School Comets Men's Basketball Division 1 State Champions. Now, you'll notice I came in costume this morning. These guys have really, and their predecessors, really have quite a remarkable record. They won the Division 1 Championship over Oakland Tech on March 23rd in Sacramento for their second state championship in five years. They beat Fairfax High at the Forum for the city championship for their third straight city title. They beat Long Beach Poly to win the Southern California Regional Championship. They have a 32-2 record. They're ranked number five in the nation by both USA Today and StudentSport.com in the whole country, if you please, right here from our Westchester community. They're ranked number one in the state by the Daily Breeze and the LA Times, as well they should be since they're the state champions. This year, they've played and defeated teams from Florida, New York, Kentucky, Washington, DC, and Pennsylvania, and the rest of the country be far behind. The Comets star player, Hassan Adams, Adams is the first student from Westchester High to be named in the McDonald's All-American Team. And so, who's got my certificates? Where are those? I want you to join me in, and join also Dana Perryman, the principal. Yeah, you have to come in front, those guys are taller. Who's the shortest? Who's the most bajo? I'm sure you're a much better athlete. And the head coach, Ed Assam. And I hope you will join me in welcoming our state champs. We are very proud of them. I have here a certificate for the team. Step this way, Coach. Congratulations to the Westchester High School Men's Basketball Team, Division 1 State Champs, 2002. And we have certificates for, but we'll do these in the back, for everybody on the team. I can't yell, guys, but let's at least give them a rousing hand because we're going to be back next year. So, Coach, Dana Perryman, if one of you would like to say something here? Let me just say that this is, that one of the exciting things about Westchester High School and most of our high schools and all of our high schools here in Los Angeles is that we have people from all different sets of interests. We have people from all different communities. We work together, we play together, we succeed together, and this is it. We succeed together. And I think it is a tribute to the school district and to the teachers and especially to the students for the hard work that they do. So I want to congratulate all of you. Look forward to seeing you again. Thank you. Thank you to all of the council members today. I'm very proud of my coaches and especially of my team. My team, although they're great players, they're better people. They're really, really nice young men. I'm going to be sad to see my seniors go. I'll be happy to continue with the juniors and the freshmen and the sophomores. And I'm proud to say that all of my seniors will be going to college, and they all have great grade point averages. So more than players, they're academic athletes, and we're extremely proud of them, and I wish them the best, and thank you once again.
We just would like to thank you on behalf of the whole team. We stuck it out this year. I love all of my teammates, and we all love each other, we're one big family. And I'm pretty sure our underclassmen will represent next year and be back to receive this great award. Thank you, on behalf of Westchester High School.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Mr. Holden.
One question. Did you guys beat Dorsey? Oh, they didn't make it to the playoff? They're in Bronx District.
You got another question? Okay, who's next? They beat them all.
What, anybody? One of you guys a Kobe stopper?
All right, now I think we'll move on to the doctors.
Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today we have before us representatives from the Armenian community. And as the council member for the 13th District, home to Little Armenia, it gives me great pleasure to be able to welcome them here today, but great sadness to commemorate the reason why. From the Armenian National Committee, Gado Isbjen, Benjyin, sorry, Ardas Kassajian. And we have students from the Rose and Alexis Pilius Armenian School. We also don't usually welcome revolutionaries to the council chambers, but we do have the Armenian Revolutionary Federation, a group of young people who has done a march in Little Armenia to commemorate the Armenian genocide each year. And we also have from the same God about Armenian Church, Reverend Vikan Vasilian. It's the 87th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, carried out under the Ottoman Empire from 1915 to 1923, which resulted in the deportation of 2 million Armenians, of whom 1.5 million men, women, and children were killed. 500,000 survivors from the area were expelled from their homes and over, and eliminated in over two and a half millennia, presence of Armenians in their historic homeland. The history of this is well documented. We know that this was in the last century, the first of two great genocides, and one that still has not been recognized by all of the members of the world community. And tomorrow, as we commemorate this and recognize the genocide and we march throughout the city and have ceremonies throughout the world, the testament of the Armenian community who still stands, one with memory, but two, as living testament to the courage of humanity. We welcome them here today to mark that anniversary, and we welcome any comments from them at this point.
Thank you, councilmen. Council President Padilla, honorable members of council, tomorrow marks the 87th anniversary of one of the blackest days of human history. It was on April 24th, 1915, that the Turkish government began its planned and systematic extermination of the Armenian people. On that night, in the capital of the Ottoman Empire, Constantinople, Armenian intellectuals, politicians like yourselves, writers and poets, artists, teachers, doctors, and other community leaders were dragged from their beds in the middle of the night, placed under arrest and executed without reason. This orchestrated process was repeated in every major city, town, and village where Armenians lived. Subsequently, men were executed, followed by the deportation of women, the elderly, and innocent children into the deserts of Syria condemned to certain death. This premeditated, wanton massacre of the Armenian people claimed the lives of over 1.5 million innocent civilians. Their crack simply being Armenian and demanding their God-given inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Unfortunately, history continues to repeat itself today as the world witnesses the destruction caused by intolerance and hate. The city of Los Angeles has been and always will be a refuge for the persecuted. As Armenians fled these massacres, many came to the United States and eventually settled in Southern California in hopes of finding a piece of the American dream. Today, Los Angeles boasts one of the largest populations of Armenians anywhere in the world outside the current Republic of Armenia. The city of Los Angeles, the city of angels, has served as a guardian angel to those that survived the unspeakable horrors of 1915, and for that, the citizens of Los Angeles who are of Armenian descent, thank you. The bond between the Armenian people and the city of Los Angeles continues to grow as more and more Armenians call Los Angeles their home. And on April 24th every year, this bond is renewed. For as Turkey has yet to acknowledge its guilt in perpetrating the massacre of the Armenians, and as yet our president refuses to reaffirm the moral and righteous position of the United States in regards to the historical facts of this tragedy, the city of Los Angeles yet again stands firm with Armenian citizens and its unwavering support and sympathy for the Armenian people. Your commitment to acknowledge the pain and suffering of the Armenian people is a testament to not only Armenians, but to victims of human rights violations worldwide. We have here with us, as a distinguished council member announced, members of the Armenian Youth Federation, students from Rose and Alex Pilius Armenian School, and in addition, we have a special, we have the special honor of having with us a survivor of the genocide, Mr. Dirta Karachi. On behalf of the Armenian National Committee of America, the ANC Hollywood Chapter, East Valley Chapter, and West Valley Chapter, and indeed on behalf of the entire Armenian population of Los Angeles, I wish to thank you for this steadfast support. We would like to thank in particular Councilmember Eric Garcetti, who has taken the initiative to reaching out to the Armenian community in his council district, and who continues to work with Armenians to better the lives of all citizens of Los Angeles and making our city a place void of hate and intolerance. Once again, thank you for your past, present, and future encouragement and support.
Again, there are so many members of our city family too who are Armenian heritage. I'd like to thank in particular my deputy, Byzar Tomasiyan, who is right over there, who really helped create Little Armenia and has been a voice for the community here in the city for so long. Thank you, Byzar, for your work as well.
Ms. Grul?
I wanted to add my congratulations to the students represented here today and the ANC and so many others who are reminding us of the genocide that happened so many years ago and remind us how we need to support tolerance, one in which we work together and bring the city and our various cultures together. So I stand along with Councilman Eric Garcetti and so many of our members in support of your acknowledgement of this important day and that we all remember tomorrow the tragedy that occurred and one that we can make sure those things never happen. So congratulations on your efforts, and I look forward to similarly working with the Armenian community in Los Angeles.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, I thank Mr. Garcetti for bringing us, bringing in today to remind us so we never forget what happened to Armenian communities in 1915. I would say that I did pleasure learning more about the atrocities that were committed against these fine people during that time when Deputy of mine, Kerry Naderian, who still works for the city but was on my staff for a number of years, Kim Kim Join, also served on my staff. In fact, I have...
Uh, thank, thank you to all of the council members today. I'm very proud of my coaches and especially of my team. My team, although they're great players, they're better people. They're really, really nice young men. I'm going to be sad to see my seniors go. I'll be happy to continue with the juniors and the freshmen and the sophomores. And I'm proud to say that all of my seniors will be going to college. And they all have great grade point averages. So more than players, they're academic athletes and we're extremely proud of them. And I wish them the best and thank you once again.
Uh, we just would like to thank you on behalf of the whole team. We stuck it out this year. I love all of my teammates and we all love each other. We're one big family. And I'm pretty sure our underclassmen will represent next year and be back to receive this great award. Thank you on behalf of West Church High School.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Galant. Mr. Holden.
One question. Did you guys beat Dorsey? Oh, they didn't make it to the playoff? They're in box district.
You got, you got another question? Okay, who's next? They beat them all.
What, anybody, uh, one of you guys a Kobe stopper?
Kobe stopper?
All right, now I think we'll move on to the adopted.
Uh, chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti for presentation.
Colleagues, today we have before us representatives from the Armenian community. And as the council member for the thirteenth district, home to Little Armenia, it gives me great pleasure to be able to welcome them here today, but great sadness to commemorate the reason why. From the Armenian National Committee, Gharo Isbeyin, Benjyin, sorry, Ardas Kassajian. And we have students from the Rose and Alexis Pilipos Armenian School. We also don't usually welcome revolutionaries to the council chambers, but we do have the Armenian Revolutionary Federation, a group of young people who has done a march in Little Armenia to commemorate the Armenian genocide each year. And we also have from the same God about Armenian church Reverend Vikan Vasilian. It's the eighty-seventh anniversary of the Armenian genocide, carried out under the Ottoman Empire from nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three, which resulted in the deportation of two million Armenians, of whom 1.5 million men, women, and children were killed. Five hundred thousand survivors from the area were expelled from their homes and over, and eliminated in over two and a half millennia presence of Armenians in their historic homeland. The history of this is well documented. We know that this was, in the last century, the first of two great genocides. And one that still has not been recognized by all of the members of the world community. And tomorrow, as we commemorate this and recognize the genocide and we march throughout the city and have ceremonies throughout the world, the testament of the Armenian community who still stands, one with memory, but two, as living testament, the courage of humanity. We welcome them here today to mark that anniversary and we welcome any comments from them at this point.
Thank you, councilman. Council President Padilla, honorable members of council, tomorrow marks the eighty-seventh anniversary of one of the blackest days of human history. It was on April twenty-fourth, nineteen fifteen, that the Turkish government began its planned and systematic extermination of the Armenian people. On that night, in the capital of the Ottoman Empire, Constantinople, Armenian intellectuals, politicians like yourselves, writers and poets, artists, teachers, doctors, and other community leaders were dragged from their beds in the middle of the night, placed under arrest, and executed without reason. This orchestrated process was repeated in every major city, town, and village where Armenians lived. Subsequently, men were executed, followed by the deportation of women, the elderly, and innocent children into the deserts of Syria condemned to certain death. This premeditated, wanton massacre of the Armenian people claimed the lives of over 1.5 million innocent civilians, their crack simply being Armenian and demanding their God-given inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Unfortunately, history continues to repeat itself today as the world witnesses the destruction caused by intolerance and hate. The city of Los Angeles has been and always will be a refuge for the persecuted. As Armenians fled these massacres, many came to the United States and eventually settled in Southern California in hopes of finding a piece of the American dream. Today, Los Angeles boasts one of the largest populations of Armenians anywhere in the world outside the current Republic of Armenia. The city of Los Angeles, the City of Angels, has served as a guardian angel to those that survived the unspeakable horrors of nineteen fifteen. And for that, the citizens of Los Angeles who are of Armenian descent, thank you. The bond between the Armenian people and the city of Los Angeles continues to grow as more and more Armenians call Los Angeles their home. And on April twenty-fourth every year, this bond is renewed. For as Turkey has yet to acknowledge its guilt in perpetrating the massacre of the Armenians, and as yet our president refuses to reaffirm the moral and righteous position of the United States in regards to the historical facts of this tragedy, the city of Los Angeles yet again stands firm with Armenian citizens and its unwavering support and sympathy for the Armenian people. Your commitment to acknowledge the pain and suffering of the Armenian people is a testament to not only Armenians, but to victims of human rights violations worldwide. We have here with us, as the distinguished council member announced, members of the Armenian Youth Federation, students from Rose and Alexis Pilipos Armenian School, and in addition, we have a special, we have the special honor of having with us a survivor of the genocide, Mr. Dirta Karachi. On behalf of the Armenian National Committee of America, the ANC Hollywood Chapter, East Valley Chapter, and West Valley Chapter, indeed on behalf of the entire Armenian population of Los Angeles, I wish to thank you for this steadfast support. We would like to thank in particular Councilmember Eric Garcetti, who has taken the initiative to reaching out to the Armenian community in his council district and who continues to work with Armenians to better the lives of all citizens of Los Angeles and making our city a place void of hate and intolerance. Once again, thank you for your past, present, and future encouragement and support.
Again, there are so many members of our city family too who have Armenian heritage. I'd like to thank in particular my deputy, Baitzar Tomasyan, who is right over there, who really helped create Little Armenia and has been a voice for the community here in the city for so long. Thank you, Baitzar, for your work as well.
I wanted to add my congratulations to the students represented here today and the ANC and so many others who are reminding us of the genocide that happened so many years ago and remind us how we need to support tolerance, one in which we work together and bring the city and our various cultures together. So I stand along with Councilman Eric Garcetti and so many of our members in support of your acknowledgement of this important day and that we all remember tomorrow the tragedy that occurred and one that we can't make sure those things never happen. So congratulations on your efforts and I look forward to similarly working with the Armenian community and the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Uh, Mr. President, members, I think Mr. Garcetti is bringing us, bringing in today to remind us so we never forget what happened to Armenian communities in nineteen fifteen. I would say that I did pleasure learning more about the atrocities that were committed against these fine people during that time when Deputy of mine, Karen Darian, who still works for the city, but was on my staff for a number of years, Kim Kim Join, also served on my staff. In fact, I have attorneys named Margaret Cregos. I want to just say to you that an opportunity to serve Duke Majian, the first city governor of the state of California, dear friend, might as well. I just want you to know that it's good to get the message out there so we can always remember what happened then so that it should never happen again. Only in America that this situation can exist, where people come from their native countries, land, and come to America, they can live in peace with each other, one another. If we can do it here in America, certainly we'll be able to use it as an example and try it as an example in the world, where the problems still exist, unfortunately. So I just want to welcome you here to the council once again. Thank you for the message that was well delivered and heard by all in the chambers and also on television, Channel Thirty-Five, which will be repeated. The message should never be forgotten. We support you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, arise after Councilmember Grul and Councilmember Holden and his fine remarks. Councilmember Garcetti, thank you for putting these folks together and your fine deputy for the organization that's necessary and the great words that you read. Every day, there's history made somewhere in the world. Then when we look back in history, we look at dark history or very dark history. And we should never forget history and always put a light on history and the tragedy to the Armenian, Armenian people. And what I'm just so proud of is the struggle that you have, not just in the history, but in your involvement in Los Angeles now, in the neighborhoods that Eric represents and that I share, and even our surrounding cities. The Armenian people in Los Angeles have grown to be great partners with the City of Angels. And I also, at this time, also wanted to recognize, you spoke of your fine deputy, but one of the greatest legislative aides, Abak, Italian Abak. Please recognize Abak for all the work. Eddie Banks, push Abak out a little, please, Sergeant. Push him out. To the young people who are here this morning, you're looking at a man who's worked for over a quarter of a century here for all people of Los Angeles and has often brought the needs of the Armenian American people to our attention, which is so important. And just like the deputy for Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Garcetti himself and arranging for all of you to come today, it's important for you to be knowledgeable of what has gone in the past and take the opportunity to speak it so we never forget it in the future. Thank you all very much for coming to City Hall and then making this very special presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I believe that concludes the presentations for today. Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Mr. President, items numbers three through twelve on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held. Items three through twelve are now before us, public hearings have been held. I do have cause of item number five, it would take the motion from the floor to be open to public hearing. Members wishing to call any specials, items three through twelve. Items three through twelve, any specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Items three through twelve are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, items numbers thirteen through fifteen are acceptance of bids pursuant to notice of sale from pipeline franchises in the city of Los Angeles, published on April tenth, two thousand and two. The following bids have been submitted with a certified check worth some of five hundred dollars as a guarantee of good faith by the following bidders. For item number thirteen, Shore Terminals Incorporated. For item number fourteen, Redburn Energy Company LLC. And item number fifteen, Whittier Pipeline Corporation, a wholly owned subsidiary of Venico Incorporated. A motion is required from the floor to approve and accept the bids.
Consider motion from the floor to accept bids. Mr. Pacheco moves. Ready for a vote? Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those bids are accepted and approved. Mr. President, items numbers sixteen through twenty-seven on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held. I understand item number twenty-seven, you wish to hold that on the desk. Hold item twenty-seven on the desk. Item sixteen through twenty-six now before us, do not have requests from the public to be heard on these items. Members wishing to call any specials? These are rule sixteen motions without objection. Consider them today. Members wishing to call any specials, item sixteen through twenty-six. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those items are approved. Next item. On the supplemental agenda, items numbers thirty-one and thirty-two are items noticed for public hearing. Item number thirty-two, a motion is required inasmuch as the recommendation is submitted without, it is submitted without recommendation. Items thirty-one and thirty-two before us do not have requests from the public to be heard on these items. Mr. Clerk, please note to Ms. Misakowski, is exiting chambers. Is there a motion on item number thirty-two?
I'd like to call thirty-two special, please.
Item thirty-two, call special by Mr. Grul. Anybody wishing to call item thirty-one special? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item thirty-one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item thirty-one is approved.
Thank you, fourth with, please.
Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, items numbers thirty-four and thirty-five on the supplemental agenda are items where public hearings have been held. Items thirty-four and thirty-five before us, just received a request from Council District Eleven to continue item thirty-five for one week. Without objection? Or is there an objection to continue item thirty-five? Without objection, so ordered. That would be item thirty. Item thirty-four, anybody wishing to call? Item thirty-four special. Mr. Holden calls item thirty-four special. Next items, please. Item number thirty-seven. Excuse me, items numbers thirty-six through thirty-nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. I understand item number thirty-seven, Mr. Garcetti wishes to have that returned to committee. Requests to return item thirty-seven to committee. Members, without objection, so ordered. So item number thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine before us. Ms. Perry, does you wish to call any special?
To speak on item thirty-seven.
Item thirty-seven. Okay, Ms. Perry, there's been a request to refer that back to committee.
To bifurcate those proceedings and if it is the will of the council to allow the portion, there's two primes in this situation, and who allows Sorel associates to move forward?
Let's, let's call that special. Let's call thirty-seven special. Thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine before us. Public hearings have not been held on those who, without objection, we shall consider these matters today. We have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items. Thirty-seven, call special. Thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine before us. Any other specials? Thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-nine before us. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next item. Mr. President, items numbers twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and forty are closed session items to wish those to remain on the desk. Let's hold those on the desk. Brings you back to... Item number twenty-seven is being held on the desk, so item number thirty-two, call special by Councilmember Grul. Item thirty-two, Mr. Grul.
Good morning. I would just like to stand up and ask for an I vote, which is moving approval or denial, excuse me, the appeal based on the APC's findings. Just want to mention that last week when this item was before committee, the city council, we had twenty members of the community and we have close to that again today. I want to appreciate you coming down twice. They've been very active on this issue, so I would like to ask all of my colleagues to vote I on this motion. Number thirty-two.
Number thirty-two now before us. I've just received one public comment card. Colleagues, let's call forward at this time Gregory Sanders. Is Gregory Sanders here?
Council President Padilla, members of the council, Gregory W. Sanders, attorney of law, representing Sprint PCS. I, I take it, Council President Padilla, that the hearing has been closed? Is that correct? Or is the hearing open? Is the hearing open?
This is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, so it is open. Prelimarily, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to advise you that Sprint PCS is currently diligently investigating an alternative to the site that is before you. It is actually a revisitation of an alternative that was previously considered by Sprint, but for which no lease was available. If the site is available to Sprint and if it meets all of the radio frequency objectives for coverage in the area, then it would be unnecessary for this appeal to go forward. And our best estimate is that we will know within thirty days whether or not that alternative is available. So I would preliminarily respectfully request that the council continue this matter for thirty days in order for Sprint to finish its due diligence on that side and determine whether or not there is a viable alternative.
Okay, thank you very much. This closes the public hearing on item thirty-two. Colleagues, we have this rule's motion before us, other members wishing to be recognized. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item thirty-two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Grul's motion is adopted. Mr. Weiss.
Move item twenty-fourth with.
Item twenty-fourth with, items thirty-one and thirty-six fourth with his votes. Next item. Mr. President, item number thirty-four, call special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden, item thirty-four. Pass the other one? Oh, thirty-four. All right.
Mr. President, members, I guess we can have a report. City Attorney should be here on this issue.
I've called him, I think he's on his way.
On the way down.
He's on his way down.
Let's hold this on the desk, waiting to see your attorney. We'll take the next item. Mr. President, item number thirty-seven, there has been a motion to continue to send that matter to committee. Do you wish to reconsider? Ms. Perry, call special. Without objection, let's reconsider. Colleagues, Mr. Garcetti requested item thirty-seven be referred back to committee. Ms. Perry wishes to bifurcate the matter. Who should we hear from first? Mr. Garcetti.
Um, yeah, actually, that was something we've been considering too. I'm full support of doing that. The questions, this came up again, colleagues, and these are CRA contracts, which we asked extensive questions about, felt very comfortable about in committee. It's to, the CRA abolished its public information capacity a few years back and it's ongoing streamlining right now in order to rebuild some communication capacity internally. It had a RFP out, it was all done properly. Looks like it's going to be focusing on communication with the residents of Los Angeles, not necessarily just in promotion of the CRA as an entity. The controller had raised some questions in a separate matter about the subcontractor, so I think we should bifurcate, move ahead on the sub, on the regular contractor. I feel confident the subcontractor questions will be answered to everyone's satisfaction, but let's go through the process and make sure that's done publicly. And if we can move on the Sorel part of the contract, which is the main contractor, and not on the subcontractor, as I think Councilmember Perry was proposing, then I would be in support of that.
Okay, Ms. Perry.
He summarized my concerns exactly, so I don't need to repeat them, but I concur and hope that council will vote for that bifurcated proposal unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski.
My only question, I have no objection to the CRA having entered in a contract for some public relations aspect, but was there clarity, and I don't know whether or not anyone from CRA is here, as to whether or not either the major contractor or the subcontractor represents any other project or property interest coming in front of the CRA, which they would consider, and whether or not that was asked of either or both consults? And how that would be handled? Or does this contract preclude these entities from participating on behalf of other large projects that might come before the CRA?
Yes, Councilwoman Richard Bendbo, Deputy Administrator for the Community Redevelopment Agency. In fact, we did ask all firms that were interviewed during the process whether or not there was any possibilities of a conflict of interest. Also advising them that if any future potential conflict should arise in their business dealings, that they would bring those to our attention.
Thank you, that was the only question I had, and I have no objection to the moving forward as suggested by Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Perry.
Okay, the members wishing to be recognized, seeing none, we do have a Garcetti-Perry or Perry-Garcetti motion on the side. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That matter has amended, is adopted. And I do see the city attorney and department staff for item thirty-four, let's take that matter next. Mr. Holden, staff is here now on item thirty-four.
Mr. President, I think the city attorney would like to give us a report, because the one that sent it file may not be the latest committee report. I think you and I had a discussion on this. I don't know if you read what's before us.
Good morning. Ed Perez with the city attorney's office. Yes, I read the committee report, what I, I think, what you would like me to do is explain what we're doing in the bankruptcy proceedings to date. The franchise, overbuilt franchise for WinFirst was granted in July of last year. In March, March eleventh, they filed for bankruptcy protection. When they filed for bankruptcy protection, it was imposed an automatic stay on all contracts, and we have retained outside bankruptcy counsel.
You got one, I'm sorry.
We have been, we have retained outside bankruptcy counsel, and he has advised us that the automatic stay does apply to our franchise agreement. It is now an asset in bankruptcy, as they call it. So we're there, but what we have done now is we have filed intervention in the bankruptcy proceeding, and we are now officially on record as creditors, and we'll, we'll be receiving all the filings that any party makes, and we will attend the proceedings that we believe are important for us to attend, so we're, there as a matter of record. Now, Councilman Holden, I know you have...
Mr. President, members, Ms. Perez is saying, give us some very important information here regarding the status of this contract and what it will mean to the city of Los Angeles' future as they attempt to provide a franchise citywide to a television. Go ahead.
Correct, okay. And I know Councilman Holden and you have expressed an interest in starting revocation proceedings, consulted with our bankruptcy counsel, and he has advised that what we would need to do is to do one of two things. If we were to talk to the debtor, debtor's attorney and get a stipulation to proceed with the administrative aspects of the revocation proceedings, we could do that. They have not answered our repeated request to do so, so the next step we intend to take with your approval.
Hey, whoa, whoa, whoa. You're gonna be around to vote on this and all your jawbone. Go ahead, tell them, because this is the big one.
So what we plan to do with your approval, with council's approval, Mr. Holden, is to file a, a motion with the bankruptcy court asking for several... file a motion with the bankruptcy court asking for several things. First, one of them, we want to argue that the automatic stay doesn't apply to governmental entities, and it's an option, we're not sure we'll get that granted, but in the alternative then, we're going to ask if we can go forward with administrative proceedings, public hearings, to find out what WinFirst intends to do, why they filed bankruptcy, what they intend to do, and explain, hopefully to our satisfaction, that they intend to go forward and honor their commitment. And if not, then we need to ask the court for permission to go ahead and revoke the franchise. So that is our next step, and we wait your direction on that, Mr. Holden.
Wait, when you're going to ask, you asking for a direction right now to the...
Yes, sir.
We repeat that, because that's not a part of the report. That you're waiting for direction, this report says no.
Ah, well then, we have a brownback problem. Is that right?
Pardon?
If you're asking, well...
I guess we can do that on our own.
Yeah, no, we can tell you to do it, and I think we should give you that instruction today. And what instructions are you asking for, Mr. Perez?
Whether we should file a motion before the bankruptcy court and seek permission to commence the administrative process towards revocation.
I saw move. All right, fine, move in a second. The general manager department, do you want to make any comments?
I'm here to answer any questions. I've been consulting with Mr. Perez over these actions and am prepared to file a motion that would allow us to continue, move forward our administrative process that we had started prior to filing bankruptcy.
So, and if the administrative process fail, as you said, the attorneys have not been responding to your number of telephone calls, is that correct, Mr. Perez?
Not thus far, they have not.
Therefore, they have not responded, number one. Number two, if they fail to respond and you fail to resolve this administrative fee, then what would be the next action?
Well, we would request permission from the bankruptcy court to seek revocation of the franchise.
Proceed to revoke the franchise, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, Mr. President, members, when this matter, when I first put the motion in, I asked that we do that then, before this contract with WinFirst become an asset to be distributed in the bankruptcy court. And they still not, they still don't feel the real impact of what's been done here. Now it has become an asset in the bankruptcy court, is that right, Mr. Perez?
It is an asset right now, as we speak.
As we speak, which can be distributed to the others who ever claim.
May I add a comment there? Yes, that's true, and that's why it's part of this motion, we will ask that the court of bankruptcy declare that we should have the right to approve or not approve any transfer of that order.
Mr. President, members, I just want to say our support, which you're not recommending, Mr. Perez, but once again, I'll say, I told you so. I told you so, even after we had voted, after it was voted for, Mr. Haan in my opposition to give them the contract, because they were not financially solvent, you know, they didn't go forth. But I came back with a motion when they declared bankruptcy, went to the bankruptcy court to say, intervene now, it's called theory of preemption. Now you sat at the table, some of my colleagues sat around the table, said, no, we don't want to do that. We have nine and eighteen, six months or whatever. I said, once it declared an asset, it's in the hands of the court. I said, then and now, that's part of the report, it's in the hands of the court, which you may or may not be able to resolve. Remember me telling you that?
I remember that comment.
You know, and I'm not even a lawyer. We have a simple common sense. The only thing is that common sense is not common anymore. General managers, they all sat there and said, this is the way to go, which is not the rating to have gone. And now we're out there, now when the decision's got to be made by someone rather than us, we could have preempted, we could have gone to the court, we could have asked at that time, the judge, the judge could have said yes or no, but we should have asked. Am I right, Mr. Perez?
Direct on, gentlemen.
All right, well, I throw my hands up. In court, they say, I rest my case.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just actually a question for Councilmember Holden, and you were right. Could you clarify what your motion is, and I just out of curiosity? Sorry?
The motion was part of my original motion, saying we should...
Oh, to bring, just to bring the testimony?
Yeah, ask the court.
So I just wanted to ask you a question, is this something you're coordinating with the Chair of ITGS, because I know there's going to be a public hearing on this, and he's not here today, so are we going to take any other action today?
No, no, he has turned this twice in his committee out, and this is the report. I don't see any reason why we can't go to court to protect our interests, even today.
If I may comment, vice versa, General Manager of ITA, at the last ITGS hearing, filing a stipulation or a motion was discussed in front of Councilmember Ridley Thomas, and I clarified my understanding of that meeting with his office afterwards, that he is supportive of the department moving forward and filing the motion or stipulation depending upon our ability to work with the debtor's attorneys.
So the motion, yeah, and I've been informed by his office, the motion to participate should be fine. Okay, and that's all we're going, okay.
And there is a, by the way, a hearing next Tuesday, and Brad first indicated it.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Holden, other members wishing to be recognized. Is that the defense? The defense rests. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on Mr. Holden's motion. This is a substitute motion. Roll is open, please close the roll and tabulate the vote. That substitute motion is approved. Thank you very much. Next item, please. Mr. President, not on the agenda is special one. It's a motion that was put forward by Padilla Weiss, and the city attorney will speak to the need to make findings. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, yes. This has to do with Senate Bill seventeen hundred, which was introduced by Peace on February twenty-first. It was anticipated that this was not going to be coming to committee quite so quickly, but it was, we were, the city was notified last Friday, April nineteenth, that it was set for a hearing on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, and therefore the council would need to make the findings that they need to act, it was after the posting of the agenda, and there is an immediate need to act. This is a resolution for the city to take a position on a bill that has to do with the tobacco enforcement program.
Are there any questions about considering this matter? Mr. Padilla? Oh, okay, then, open the roll on considering special one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ice.
Okay, that is matters now before us, and the chair recognizes Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, this resolution is brought in as a Rule twenty-three, because as the city attorney mentioned, we've just been informed that it's been scheduled in committee in Sacramento, so many of the resolutions that we've been considering for the last couple of weeks. I wanted to call forward staff at this time from the legislative analyst's office, from the city attorney's office, and anybody else who may add to this. When I first read a draft of the motion, it was brought to my attention that their state legislation seeking to possibly do what we're already doing in the city of Los Angeles, we established last year a tobacco enforcement program requiring establishments which sell tobacco products in the city of Los Angeles to register with the city of Los Angeles. There's no fee, there's no tax, there's no assessment to this registration, but this database compilation of information was very important for us in the city to move forward in enforcing the law when it comes to the sale of tobacco products, especially when it came to the illegal sale of tobacco products to minors. Now there's pending state legislation that on the surface level presents to do that at the state level, the concern that was brought to me initially was one of preemption of the state, of our local programs. On the surface level, that didn't bother me much, to be honest with you. If the state was willing to do just as good of a program, if not have a stricter program, I had no problem with that. It wasn't necessary for the city to go forward, but there's been other information brought to my attention since then about some of the sponsors of the bill, who's in support, who's in opposition, what the teeth is really of the bill, and I wanted all of us to hear from our city staff, so we know what we can go on today.
This is Assistant City Attorney Sue Franz. As we had indicated when city council supported Assembly Bill two-two-oh-five, that we were in fact negotiating with Steve Peace's office regarding creating some preemption language, and in fact, we had been working on that for several weeks. However, when it was submitted and when the bill came out in its revised form last week, we were somewhat dismayed that under section two-two-nine-eight-four, that there's a preemption that begins on January first, two thousand and four, and will run through January first, two thousand and seven, which really decimates a program that city council had unanimously passed in the year two thousand and is up and running now with forty-two hundred registered retailers. It is, it also in terms of the enforcement mechanism, and I think that's the other issue that we're looking at, is would this be better? And we think not, specifically when you look at the penalties, it's untenable to think how we can enforce it, because it would have to have two violations within a twelve-month period, given the parameters of the tobacco enforcement program, which I think is a model for the state of California, it becomes virtually impossible to do this type of enforcement. Therefore, there isn't the teeth that are involved in this particular statute that we have in our local ordinance. I would also indicate that there's twenty-three cities and counties within the state of California that have varying component parts of a tobacco enforcement program. We're probably, the largest one, it goes, I've looked at NAFAs, NAPA has only ninety retailers, and I think what happens is it allows each city to adapt the tobacco enforcement program that is best suited for their needs. As to the other issue, as to who specifically is opposing this bill tomorrow, as it is in committee, I'll have Nora speak to that. Thank you. My name is Nora Bontemps, and I'm the administrative coordinator of the tobacco enforcement program. What we do know about it, the people who are opposing it are the major public health organizations, such as the American Heart Association, American Lung Association, as well as the American Cancer Society, as well as several public health organizations that are local organizations here to Los Angeles that are big supporters of the tobacco enforcement program. One of the things that I think is key to this program is that we are trying to stop the sale, illegal sale of tobacco products to minors. I think because we have a local program, local enforcement is essential. We are able, we've just received our baseline data in our second year, we'll be able to see where we have areas within the fifteen council districts, problematic areas, we're able to see where those problems are, so that we can address them. So I think that a local program is always best, the state should beat the floor and not the ceiling on this. The major supporter of this is the California Gerson Association, and last year with Assembly Bill seven forty-four, they were also a major supporter of this type of legislation to preempt the city, so that is the major supporter of California Gerson. Mr. Karsch?
Michael Karsch with the legislative analyst's office. Opposition to this bill would be consistent with prior positions of the city, and a comment on the urgency of the matter, we had been in conversation with Senator Peace's office, it wasn't clear that he was going to preempt, the amendment that did establish the preemption was put in last Thursday, and then we learned of the hearing tomorrow, hence the urgency of taking a position today.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to commend the staff for keeping that close eye in Sacramento. Changes were just last Thursday, you brought this to my attention between Friday and Monday, that's quick action on your part. Colleagues, two additional things. One is, we look at the lineups, who's in favor of this bill, who's against this bill, and we see organizations like the Cancer Society, the Law Association, other healthcare advocates, that's where I would like the city of Los Angeles to line up on that team, because we've had, this is the other point, for the year members, we've had a conversation and a debate about this program. It was first proposed over a year ago, the veteran members of this council were part of that debate, and we looked at the issue of legal versus illegal tobacco sales in the city of Los Angeles, not just as a healthcare issue, but as a law, as a crime, as a public safety issue, and it was those considerations that drove us to implement an aggressive and innovative program at the local level in the city of Los Angeles, spearheaded by our city attorney at that time, Jim Haan. I think we've been successful without, as we mentioned, the first year, our baseline data forthcoming, and want to continue to attract this program in future years for the health, safety, and public safety of our children and all families in the city of Los Angeles. So I would ask for your support of this resolution, and again, commend staff for their good work in monitoring Sacramento.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, Mr. Peace should quit. I mean, he gave us the energy dereglementation bill, is that right? It wasn't his name, Peace. He's not making any peace around here. And, Mr. President, members, this is just a sneaky trick being employed by Mr. Peace from the Senate that hopefully will die in the assembly if he ever get that far, whereby they're going to preempt local government from establishing and enforcing laws to protect minor, minor children from the tobacco industry. That's when they get started. That's when they're more likely to participate in their smoking, or they, and so on. Mr. President, members, we have good laws in the book, we don't need to be preempted by state government in this area. Local government should be, knows its community best, and should be supported. We should come out on record against Senate Bill seventeen seventy by Peace, post haste. And another thing, Mr. President, members, Madam President, I'm sorry, that the money that we derive from the tobacco control fund, it will not come to us anyway, and yet we'll be required to enforce state law. SB ninety, which is a disclaimer, which says that the state shall not adopt any laws which requires participation of local government not be funded by state law, is that right, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
So, yet, notwithstanding the fact that SB ninety is in place, they're still saying that we should be required to enforce state law, which is new become law. All of that's unreasonable. It's another clear example that when some people get elected, they no longer, they tend to, no longer not to be responsible to the people that they, who elect them, that they serve and represent. They go off on a tangent. It happens locally, happens statewide and nationally. Be mindful of that. This is a very bad bill, and we should defeat it. Yes, we should have a unanimous vote here, and some of my colleagues are still there, I'll contact them personally, to kill this one off. Mr. Karsch? Thank you.
That is the last speaker we now have before us, special one, which is a resolution recommending opposition to Senate Bill seventeen hundred. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ice.
That matter is approved. We'll send it forthwith to the mayor. Thank you, thank you. Members, I would like to invite you to join me in welcoming in the chamber today a group of thirty women who are part of the local chapter of the Brandeis University Women from CD eleven. They are led by Mrs. Goldstein, and I would like you to join with me in welcoming them to the city hall. Thank you for visiting us. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, item number twenty-seven is pending on the desk, and in addition to that, items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and forty are closed session items. Do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Okay, we will take the public comment. We have Mr. Leonard Wayne Rose Junior.
Leonard Wayne Rose here. I got an very good news about the keep a crime down, and this is a letter here. Dear Los Angeles City Council, I am encouraged here to obtain the McGruff Dog Safety Brew magazine to pass out to all your children and medical scene, and not only fun, but also helpful teaching our children about safety. We as a community must work with our local government agency and school to protect our children. The magazine teaches on safety topics like streets dangers, stranger, and drugs, etc. Please consider this magazine as a tool to help your children in our, in our school. Please station, fire station, and open house. McGruff Dog, one eight hundred, we prevent, or W W W, we prevent dot O R T. Billboard post on street freeway, and that city hall, county, school district, police department, policeman, police woman, fire department, our governor, leaders, and Senator Reverend Senate, pitch in the money to buy McGruff Dog for children. And this, I made a copy about the McGruff Dog, safety procedure. I got this, uh... I got this at Cavanagh City Hall, you know, involve McGruff Dog Safety Shield for children. This is one of the best to saw children, helmets for helmets, got a nine-one. Stay away from drinking, smoking, drugs, you know. And this is good for all children about the education. And this program, all the activities for all the people in the community. I got this at Cavanagh City Hall, and this all about McGruff Dog. And we need to get volunteer police officer and, and cross the guard, you know. And if a city, a county, a school district get together, have that around. And we also, I'd like to have a cative from all you guys to sign your name, you know. This is a regional one, cative. I got LA School District a cative award. And if you guys give me catives this year, and Jim Hahn, and you guys could sign your name, and my address, and I got a copy of this.
Okay, you can give that to the Sergeant. Thank you. The chair recognizes Joan Lux. Joan?
Joan. Thank you very much. I came here today, I'm speaking on behalf of Coina Pass Neighborhood Association. I believe that a Universal Drop Ramp Project Study Report was going to be on today's agenda. I have since then taken off. And I wanted to speak before you, even though this has come to the, already gone to transportation and has been approved, because there are several people I need to thank, and our community needs to thank, because this has taken literally 20 years to come up with a solution that may divert traffic away from the corridor of Coina Pass. For openers, Councilman LaBange's office and Nate White sir for helping, assisting with the funding. Supervisor Xavier Slosky and Jenny Kruger. And I also want to thank, and I'm sorry he's not here, Councilman Burnson, who solicited and got funding from SCAG. This is a tremendous step forward for our community. I'm sure you all think Coina Pass is a rather large parking lot. And to be able to get Universal's traffic directly onto the Hollywood Freeway southbound will free up Coina Boulevard West. I thank you very much for the time, and let's hope it gets built. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Continuing public comment, we do have one final card without a name, somebody from Eagle Rock. We should speak about the chief.
Pardon me while I...
Your name for the record, please? I need to put some hats. I have some props here. Your name for the record? Oh, yes, my name is John Culver. I was really glad to see the Westchester team here. I used to teach at Jefferson High School, and so I have my Democrat glass coat on. And I want to put my props up before I get my speech. I was supposed to do on the East Side. Friday, I was at Roosevelt, had the privilege of listening to that fantastic orchestra and band and choir. You know, Mr. Martinez there, and the crew was just great, you know, and I'm just glad to be back in the system. Mr. Holden, I was in, I came to Fremont, when I first came to LA in '78, grew up here, I came down from San Francisco where I got my teaching credential. I know that Kenny Hahn is the one who brought lights to South Central. The only lights, lights we have at Fremont there as a result of his connection with the community. Anyhow, I'll give my glasses later. I, when should I begin? Your time is running, sir. You have provided a minute. Oh, I didn't, I didn't want to start. They were asking me questions. I didn't get a chance to start. I want to wish Chief Park well in his election for the city council seat now occupied by Mark Berthley Thomas. I think it's a great, it's great to do it, that the community has a, has a place to support the chief. I always had the privilege of attending school in England as an exchange student. I went to Harvard School, now it's Harvard Wesley. I had, I went to school with Prince Charles at Gordonston in Scotland. I'd like the council to consider going way outside the box when they consider a candidate for the, for the position of chief. Policing in England is quite different than it is here. And even though they've had a history of terror with IRA bombings, the officers on the street, the online officers don't carry any guns. There's guns in the car, but the guys on the street talk first, and they have to, they shoot later. I think that by doing that, we might have a whole different attitude. I don't say take the guns away from the officers that already have them. Maybe we can hire some, hire some new people that don't carry guns. An exchange student from England came to my family's house to live. Harvard School had dropped its boarding program, and Ian Blair lived with us when he studied at Harvard School. From Harvard School, he went to Christ Church Oxford, did well, and went into the Police Academy for England, I guess the Metropolitan Police. Now he's a... If I can ask you to conclude, please? If I can ask you to conclude, please? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. If I can ask you to conclude? Oh, yes. Anyway, I know Ian Blair, he came and studied here in the United States. Because of what he learned here, he learned how to treat women, who've been raped better. He took that back to England. When in England, he headed a commission that looked into policing misconduct. I haven't contacted Ian, but that's not the point. By considering someone from outside the country will be showing that globalization is not a one-way process. We can look from other countries. I don't know if Ian can take the job, or he didn't want it, but maybe thinking about someone from there might help us in our policing here. Thank you very much. Mr. President, you go to Harvard? Huh? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk? Next item, please. Mr. President, now's the time for motions referred. The motions are posted and referred. Councilmembers requesting excused from council attendance, Councilmember Ms. Kowski requesting excused on May 24th for city business. This meets policy. Ms. Kowski is excused. Councilmember Pacheco requests me excused on April 30th, May 8th, and to leave early on May 21st and May 22nd. This also meets policy. Mr. Pacheco is excused. And another councilmember, Pacheco, requests excused on April 24th to leave at noon for personal business. This also meets policy. Mr. Pacheco is excused. The desk is clear, except for item 27 and the closed session matters. In conformance with California law, the council now adjourned into closed session. I ask the glass to please clear the chambers.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 27. There's a motion on the desk to note and file that matter.
Motion to note and file item 27, and LaBange's motion. Mr. LaBange.
Yeah, Mr. President, members of council, I believe it gives instructions for our city administrative officer and others to do the right thing and to work to make sure we have great recognition for Cesar Chavez and the work that he has done, and also have great recognition for Christopher Columbus and all Italian-Americans and the contributions that they've made to this country. And so I just wanted to thank everyone for working this situation out, because it's so important that we have a holiday, that we recognize the importance of that holiday and celebrate that holiday, and the Cesar Chavez holiday, and the day of service, and the involvement there, which is so important. And now we're coming up on Memorial Day holiday here in, in the end of May, and also Flag Day coming up, and some other holidays that we don't get days off, but we should recognize the importance of history on these days so that the knowledge could be spread throughout the community in the proper way. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I do also want to echo Councilmember LaBange's comments that this is a, an example of how we took something that was unfortunately going down the wrong path, and we turned it around so that we could certainly honor a great man, Cesar Chavez, as, as he deserves, but not to give up a holiday that clearly was important to a lot of people, not only in this city, but I got comments from beyond Los Angeles on the importance of preserving the Christopher Columbus holiday. And I think the lesson that I think is important for all of us is that sometimes these holidays that have been around forever, and as you said, sometimes they just become a day off of work, clearly Christopher Columbus holiday was important, passionately important, to a great segment of our city, and I think this was the right thing that we, that we did. And I apologize really on behalf of some of our city officials who, I think, not meaning to, clearly offended a lot of people in this city. So I'm glad we did the right thing, and this is a good example of, of working it out.
Mr. Reyes?
I too wanted to rise, especially in the city where we have over 500 years of Spanish-speaking tradition, now with the new era of the past 100 and so years where we have been evolving as a grand city, a diverse city. To acknowledge Columbus Day as well as Cesar Chavez is very important, and just as important is to acknowledge all the hard work and the sacrifice Cesar Chavez has come to bear for the rights of all folks who are suffering injustices. I had the opportunity earlier, past couple of months, to acknowledge Dolores Huerta, a woman who stood side by side with Cesar Chavez, who is still a living symbol for many of us who continue to struggle for the rights of those who don't have access to attorneys, who don't have access to housing, who don't have access to education and, and health programs. So again, this is a very dynamic issue. It's a very important issue. I want to thank the unions, I want to thank the CAO and all the city family for coming together and acknowledging the richness of our cultures. Thank you so much.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember LaBange, the great diplomat of this great city, preserving two great holidays. Appreciate the work that you did then. And, and ever since Spaniards sent emperors to Rome, the Spanish-speaking people and the, what would become the Italians have always been close people. So this was una buena proposición, and un bueno proposición. So I'm in full support.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, I would like to applaud the members of the council for taking this positive and corrective action. Just less than a month ago, when discussion was to substitute Cesar Chavez as a holiday in place of Columbus holiday, was just something that the Italian people, and that many of them here, could not take, not just the Italian people of Italian descent, but all the people of the city of Los Angeles. And I thought it's more fitting and proper to be in keeping with Columbus holiday as a national holiday, which it is, as a state holiday, which it is, and then if we were to join with the state of California in celebrating one of our heroes, Cesar Chavez, as a state holiday, that's fitting and proper as well. For he is the one who highlighted the tension, made us all know that farm workers were being disadvantaged and exploited. He was the one who led the, led this boycott. He was the one, the great boycott. And all, and the pesticides that were being used would shorten the lives of many farm workers, which you may not be aware of, but I was around at the time when it happened. And I'm very pleased, Mr. President, members, to join with the governor at the time, who advocated setting up the Farm Labor Board, which Cardinal Mahoney was one of his first members supporting the farm workers in the state of California. I had the privilege and the pleasure at that time to vote for his confirmation to the board. And so the rest is history, Mr. President. Cesar Chavez and his work for the workers should never be forgotten. Should be, should be memorialized and remembered, not just every day on his birthday, but every day throughout the year where farm workers are being, taken advantage of, or workers in general are being exploited. We do emphasize taking good care of our workers with the livable wages, more than the minimum wage, and other things that we've done here at the city council level to show that we care. Thank you, Mr. President, members, and this is a good vote.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members? Seeing none, we have... Mr. Zine on this item?
Press my button.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I too stand in honor and recognition of Cesar Chavez. I attended the dinner recently in honor of Cesar Chavez, where there were thousands of people in attendance at. I know my colleagues were there. Cardinal Mahoney was there, along with many elected leaders from our community, recognizing and honoring the hard work that Cesar Chavez did. And one thing he did was get the mission done without violence. And in light of Martin Luther King, who was recognized for his actions and his work in helping people, Cesar Chavez has done the same in a peaceful manner to give people the dignity and recognition that they rightfully deserve. So I too stand in honor and recognition and support my historian colleague, Councilmember LaBange, for this measure to take it forward, and so our city employees can then recognize and along with us, honor Cesar Chavez and his memory.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members? Seeing none, we do have a motion to note and file. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That shall be noted and filed.
Mr. President, item number 29A.
Right for that. Mr. LaBange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We have some distinguished guests in city council visiting the city of Los Angeles today from North Hills, who walked in, they've lived in the San Fernando Valley for 40 years. They're visiting the chambers here, and also from France, from Lyon, France, which is not far from Bordeaux, our sister city, and also from Manhattan Beach. So these are visitors who are coming down, taking advantage of the open city hall and enjoying this. And Ms. Bowman, who is the great Angelina, give her a big hand, is your guide and help of showing off. And she lives in the great 10th district. So, all right, and help Nate get elected. She did a good job, because we're, we're very much educated by all that goes around here and all the contributions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange, and welcome to all of you. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 29A, recommendation of the city attorney to accept $700,000 in settlement of assessment.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
Item, item number 30A, recommendation of the city attorney to authorize supplemental appropriation of $350,000 for outside counsel.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Item number 30, 30B is city attorney recommendation for $280,000 supplemental appropriation for outside counsel.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Before proceeding to announcements, the chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to, at this time, since it's in honor of National Poetry Month, Mr. Culver, who was with us earlier, asked that I read into the record this poem, and I would like to do that. This was written at a time when the Chicago Tribune was going to buy the LA Times. "LA Times, We Are A-Changing," by John Culver. Sitting on a stool in a cool, cool Granada Hills market, I look outside. A rare sight, snowcaps the hilltops that endorse, enclose the north San Fernando Valley. The breeze chills the top of my left hand, from my wrist to my knuckles, and my body feels numb. The brilliant lightning, lightning flashes that lit up the Friday night sky, powerful, blinding strobes, have faded as if eclipsed by the memory of the curtain of rain that followed. People come by, they say a few words, I sense the heat of their breath and the warmth of their hearts. I read their eyes as we talk about the news. I sell the Los Angeles Times to people who make time to practice rituals our forbearers enjoyed, enjoyed since awakening with the powerful invention of the ever-spinning printing press. It's the type of thing that's moved us in and out of war and revolution, in and out of office, business, marriage, life, in and out of fads, of trends, of eras. How fitting and important the celestial weekend events, for the times we are changing. The chill that blew in from the windy The chill that blew in from the windy city will melt like the snow outside this market. We have a new Tribune to lead our times in a city where new charter stays our course. In our city, where her leaders, like her people, come and go, who will talk of Michelangelo? In honor of National Poetry Month, I wanted to read that on behalf of one of my constituents, John Culver.
Nick Poet Laureate Pacheco, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk?
The desk is clear.
Announcements, are there any announcements? If not, please rise for adjourning motions. Colleagues, as we begin adjourning motions, Councilmember Burnson has asked me to adjourn in tribute of the victims of the Metrolene crash this morning. He, if you notice, Mr. Burnson left the council meeting, he went to the site and reports that at this time there are three fatalities, more than 200 injuries, including 25 serious injuries. So to the victims and the families of all involved, we offer our condolences and prayers. Ms. Gruel.
I'm standing, asking to adjourn in memory of Nicole Carvajal. She was born in Mexico and immigrated here and raised three children, and put them through school by cleaning homes and cooking, and just became a citizen a few years ago. She unfortunately passed away in a severe car accident on the 405. She is survived by her daughter Patty Velasco, her daughter Claudia Espinosa, and son James Espinosa, and I'd like us to adjourn in her memory today.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. This one brings me great sadness. Many of you will remember it wasn't but last month that I brought in a Rule 23 and asked you to support me in quickly authorizing the naming of the Bannings Landing Community Center on behalf of Gertrude Schwab, who at that time was ill. And I'm sad to say that Gertrude lost her battle with cancer and passed away Sunday morning. Gertrude, there's so much to say about Gertrude, but she clearly, above all else, loved her community of Wilmington. And for her entire life, she was 75 when she passed, for her entire life, she was born in Wilmington, she went to school in Wilmington, she met and married Bill, and they lived together in Wilmington, and she never for a moment gave up on that community. And she was one of those that tirelessly and persistently would attend council meetings, would attend planning committee meetings, would attend the Harbor Commission meetings, and fought for Wilmington's fair share of city services, which she never believed they got. And she wanted to make sure no one ever forgot Wilmington. She actually was appointed as a Harbor Commissioner by Mayor Riordan for, for one year, so it was really a great experience for her to be sort of on the other side advocating on behalf of the constituents of Wilmington. Gertrude was involved in so many things. She was a member of the Wilmington Historical Society, she was the vice president of the Banning Park Senior Citizens, she was founder and president of the Wilmington North Neighborhood Association, she was one of the steering committee members for the new Wilmington Neighborhood Council, and really felt like that was a great way to get more people involved in government. She was on the Harbor Commission from 1993 to 1994, and she was a founding member of the Friends of Bannings Landing, and she was probably more than anyone instrumental in finally getting this community center built in Wilmington, which was named the Bannings Landing Community Center, which we named the main room there after her. She received many awards and commendations, many people recognized how great she was. The Chamber of Commerce gave her one, our own council member Nate Holden and former council member Joan Milky Flores gave her commendation awards. She got the prestigious Dominguez Brands Award for community service. She survived by the love of her life, Bill, and she had three sons, Michael, Frank, and David, and she has sisters, Elsie Doan and Joan Johnson, her brothers, John, Carl, and Albert. She had seven grandchildren, one great-grandchildren, numerous nieces and nephews, and I think the whole community of Wilmington really will miss her, but I think all of Los Angeles will miss someone who never got bitter, never was angry, but just always wanted to make sure that her Wilmington was not forgotten by those who were in power. She will have her services this Friday at 10:00 AM at Bannings Landing Community Center, and the family has asked that instead of flowers or donations, that people make contributions to her beloved Bannings Landing Community Center. So I will truly miss her. She took me under her wing when I first ran for city council in 1993, and she wasn't, she didn't always agree with me, and she wasn't always pleasant, but she always was, made sure that I did the right thing and remembered Wilmington. And she was most thrilled when, after 100 years, we brought our city council meeting and held it in Wilmington. She thought that was one of the greatest days, and she was really thrilled that she lived to see that.
All members, Mr. Holden.
Members, I pretty much echo what Ms. Hahn said about Gertrude Schwab and Bill. Very active in the community, loved, as you already heard, Wilmington and the city of Los Angeles. When candidates ran for office, they would come to me and say, can you give me any support in Wilmington? Janice moved there not too long ago, and so did Jim Hahn, but I always said, called Gertrude. In fact, when Jimmy had a tough reelection campaign for the state attorney, he was not living there. And I took him down to meet with Bill and Gertrude, and they had a big turnout, big meeting, and of course, the rest is history, they gave him their solid support, then he moved down in that area. You did? Well, I didn't, then he didn't know them in Wilmington then. The fact of the matter is that that was the key difference, they got to know who your neighbors are. But the fact of the matter, Mr. President, members, that she did a lot for our city, and I was very pleased when the mayor put her on the Harbor Commission. And she was on the other side, but she got a lot done. I'm going to just say in closing that when I was aspiring for a citywide office, I went down in that particular area, and they were complaining that there were no sidewalks. Am I right? No sidewalks, the street sweeper would go down in the middle of the street. Okay, no signs posted, totally neglected, and they wanted to secede from the city at that time. But they were convinced they should stay, and if they had a change in leadership at city hall, things would be different. She's, I'm sure it will be eventually. But, all right, all right, we're going to miss her.
Very timely remarks, Mr. Holden. Others? If not, colleagues, also ask that we adjourn in memory of Anna Maria Hermosio Rogers and Anna Laura Hermosio Flores. Anna Maria Hermosio Rogers and her unborn child, Anna Laura, were taken unexpectedly in a car accident in Arlita this last week. The Flores family is a longstanding, very active family in the northeast San Fernando Valley, request that we adjourn in their memory. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.